Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And now I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Garcia for a minute.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could all remain standing for a moment, please. Heavenly Father, we seek blessings on the tasks before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. We ask for grace and healing in the aftermath of the shooting in the Oregon District. Please be with the victims and their families and grant us the strength to persevere and do better in the future. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, we have an agenda before us this evening, but I would ask for a motion to remove item 6A.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove a motion to remove item 6A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove item 6A from the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Now I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. Start with June 24th, 2019, a regular scheduled meeting. Any discussion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a so moved and a second to approve the agenda for 24th.
To approve.
To approve the agenda for June 24th.
The minutes?
Hmm?
Minutes.
The minutes. See there?
Should start over.
All those things.
All those things. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to July 8th, see if we can do any better. We've got the minutes for the regular meeting of that date. Any changes?
There's no changes. I move for approval of the July 8th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July 8th regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. And lastly, the minutes for the regular scheduled meeting of July 22nd.
I'd like to make a motion to approve July 22nd meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 22nd as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
No abstentions.
Thank you. Motion carries. Prescheduled presenters. Tonight, we have, we've been invaded by orange shirts. Now, you know those bright shirts? They can be worn driving the senior bus, too. But anyway, we do have a special presentation from the Popcorn Festival. Mr. Guthrie? I think you're on the...
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing us to have a few minutes here to really invite you and the community to the Beaver Creek Popcorn Festival. And as always, it is the weekend after Labor Day, which is September 7th and 8th. So we're really, we're about a month away from the festival. The committee has, as you can see with the orange shirts, many of them are here with me today, have been working very hard to have a great festival this year. We are naturally on track for that, and we'll have over 300 vendors at the festival. We're very excited about that. Also, during the hours of the festival, which are on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., we have an entertainment stage, which is fully scheduled with live entertainment during that whole time period. One of the many highlights we have is always the pride of Beaver Creek, the Beaver Creek High School Marching Band. It's one of the more well-attended events and one that people get excited about. They are performing at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. Just want people to know that. Also, during the day, we have the children's area, which is back again this year and is always very popular. It's only 25 cents for a ticket, and the ticket gets you a games. There's many kid games, some presenters, there's the bouncy house and blow-up obstacle course and other activities for them. There's also a beer garden both days. Then Saturday morning, we also have a 5K run in the morning, and on Sunday, we have our car show. So we have plenty of events and hope the community come out and enjoy those. We also each year have an honorary head colonel that the committee picks, and we, this year, really wanted to honor the Beaver Creek Strong and the tornado relief efforts. So as a representative of that, Bee Hope Church took a lot of initiative and leadership in helping to organize a lot of the volunteer efforts. So Pastor Kevin Jack from Bee Hope Church is represented as the head colonel this year. So we're pleased to have him in honor of the Beaver Creek Strong and the tornado relief efforts. That really wraps up my comments. So again, on behalf of the committee, we hope to see you all at the festival.
Thank you very much, Van.
Thank you.
Any other of these bright shirts gonna like to give us?
We don't want to overwhelm you.
Well, it is overwhelming, I will admit.
We always look for volunteers.
There you go. Always need volunteers. I'll repeat that for you on the air.
And donations.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much for the update, and it's an annual event that everybody looks forward to.
Thank you. And you can find more information at beavercreekpopcornfestival.org.
Any comments?
Yeah, thank you for all that you do to make this happen, because it's a valued activity in the community. So, thanks so much. It's a lot of work, I know.
Anyone? Thanks, guys. All right, next item is a public hearing, PUD 18-4.
This is an application filed by John Koppelcheck, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval for a specific site plan to allow for the development of a nine self, of nine self-storage buildings and a rental office on 3.37 acres of land. The property is located on the east side of Harbert Drive, approximately 230 feet north of the intersection of Harbert Drive and Indian Ripple Road. The properties are further described as Book 3, Page 19, Parcel 97, 98, and 105 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. All right, applicant have a presentation they'd like to give. Just give us a name and address, please.
Yeah, good evening. I'm John Koppelcheck, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard with Mills Development. Again, thanks for having us. Just to reiterate a little bit, we have the 3.4 acres on Harbert in front of you tonight. A little bit of a background to us really coming to this site is we spent two-plus years trying to find a site for a self-storage project. And couple of the parameters were trying to find a site that really a budded zoning that would work with a self-storage facility. And here, we have B4 zoning, both on the east and west side, and have no residential budding it, so visibility from Indian Ripple as well. So we thought it'd be a great site for self-storage, and we brought it before you in early 2019 for rezoning as part of our retail building that we have on Indian Ripple as well. And during that process, we committed to you that we would present to you a Class A facility. And, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job of that. If you'll see from the renderings, both on the south and on the west elevations budding or showing towards Indian Ripple and Harbert, the facades are very compatible with what we're doing on Indian Ripple with the retail building with stone, brick, and ephesus on those facades. And the zoning, or the landscaping package that we have is also, I think, far and above better than a lot of self-storage facilities in this area. So we feel pretty good about the time we've spent to really put in front of you a Class A self-storage project. We're really excited to get started on this. We probably talk about this project more than any other project internally. I know it's hard to believe with everything we have going on, but we are really excited and really want to get going as soon as we get all the approvals. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Staff presentation, please.
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the city council. The case you have before you is PUD 18-4. It's the Harbert Self-Storage. It's the second specific site plan for this PUD. As the applicant stated, there was a retail building that was outright at Indian Ripple and Harbert that was approved as the first specific site plan of the PUD. What they're looking to do here is construct nine self-storage buildings on a little bit over three and a quarter acres. Project's located in southern Beaver Creek. It's about 230 feet north of the intersection of Harbert and Indian Ripple. This project is going to go on the three parcels. Again, they are a little over three and a third acre, and they have several hundred feet of frontage on Harbert Road, Harbert Drive, but they don't have any frontage on Indian Ripple, because the retail building that we spoke of earlier would be down here on this corner parcel. Again, you can see the parcel is currently mostly wooded with some vacant ground to the west. A lot of this woods have been cleared since this aerial photo's been taken, but it's, there was a building down on the southern parcel, and that was removed around 2000, so it's been, it's been a vacant property for, you know, the last almost 20 years. To the west is the, is a business district. It's part of the PUD that this area used to be in. It's a mixture of commercial offices and then some contractor services. And then to the west is the, I'm sorry, to the east is the B4, and then the south is, you know, shopping center, the Cherry Hill Shopping Center. Seen here is the specific site plan. And now, on this particular site plan, north is to the right and not to the top. So Harbert Drive is here, and that ultimately runs north-south on the, throughout the site. But they have the one proposed entrance here, and that's going to be closed with a gate, with a PIN number or a key. They haven't decided, or a fob, or it's a way to, you know, control access. And you can see the nine buildings throughout the site. And then in between the buildings, in order to create a completely, you know, secured access area, they're going to have fencing connecting some of the buildings in the appropriate places to make sure that that is a secure facility with appropriate lighting and that it stays secure throughout the day and the evenings. What they're proposing is four parking spaces. Now, there's nothing in our code that specifically calls out for what you need for parking for a self-storage, but really, the idea of the business is, you know, majority of people are going to pull in and pull to wherever their unit is, so they're not really going to be parking at the parking, in the parking spaces. They have, they stated two employees on the larger shift, so there are a couple extra spaces for people maybe coming in to pay their rent or sign a lease for this space. But, you know, a large parking lot for this type of business really is not necessary at all. Seen here is the architectural elevations. You can see that they do show, you know, a brick and stone base, and then they got some ephesus. I think this is a better color elevation, it's a lot easier to see, but they've got the stone alternating with the brick base. And then these, at first, I thought they were doors, but they're actually ephesus panels, because they face the exterior of the building, and there's no access, I mean, there's no, there's no doors on the exterior of that, of that was building. All the storage units are, the accesses are all on the inside of the project. Now, they have one 700 square foot rental office here at the corner. That'll be right at the corner of the entry. And then again, they have various sized buildings throughout the site. And this is just to give you an idea, this is the retail building that was approved a couple months ago, just how it flows with the storage units. So I made the storage units in orange and then the approved retail building in orange as well. So, you know, they are adjacent, but there's no internal access between the two, and that wouldn't be practical just because of the nature of the self-storage units being a secure site. You wouldn't want, you wouldn't want or need any kind of cross-access between the two. As the applicant stated, they show a good mixture of landscaping throughout the site, particularly along Harbert Drive and at the entrance to the building. Staff has no concerns with their proposed landscaping. Now, this is a sign, this is just to give you an idea of the sign, this was approved as part of the retail building, so no new ground signage is proposed here this evening, but this will be a ground sign, they're replacing the existing ground sign that covers the entire business park. So the storage units will have one of the panels on here. One slight change in the condition, on condition number 10 in your motion, I omitted the words "the east," so number 10 should read, "should the property to the east develop," not "should the property develop." So I wanted to be clear, that was so that should this ever redevelop over here to the east, then they'll need to add some landscaping along the perimeter to help screen that. But right now, it's just the woods and a storage yard, so that's where the nature of that condition. I intended it to say "the east," it's said in the east in the staff report, I just, in the motion, I just didn't add those words. So should city council approve this tonight, I recommend amending condition number 10 as part of your motion. But staff and planning commission do recommend approvals of the applicant's request, and I'm happy to hear, happy to be here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thanks.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing tonight. Is there anyone present that would like to address council on this application? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we will move on. Let's see here. Council discussion, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Stone, but just glad to see this project moving along. I know that that lot's been vacant for a long time, and glad to see something come along.
It's a good fit, and I agree. Anyone? Do I hear a motion?
I'm glad that you think it can look as nice as it is, because it is in a developed area, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
I'm looking for a motion to amend condition number 10 to start with.
I move that we amend item number 10 on the original ordinance.
To read "to the east."
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend condition number 10 to read "to the east." All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Is there a motion to, on this?
I would move, for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of the specific site plan for the harbor storage units on the basis that the city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, and there are 19. I further move that this motion, with all its conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of the city council meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve PUD, or PUD 18-4, specific site plan number two. All in favor, signal every saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. And we're looking forward to it. I think it's a great addition to that part of town. Thank you. All right, next. Another public hearing, PUD 88-21.
This is an application filed by Hi5 Design Group Incorporated, 202 West Main Street, Mason, Ohio, 45040. The application requests a major modification to the specific site plan to allow for the construction of a 156-room, four-story hotel located on the north side of Fairfield Commons Boulevard, across the street from 2671 and 2687 Fairfield Commons Boulevard. The property is further described as Book 4, Page 3, Part of Parcel 4 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And I see the applicant's ready and raring to go, so please come forward, give us a name and address.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Blake Helms with Hi5 Design Group. Our company is located at 202 West Main Street, Mason, Ohio. I'll keep my comments brief, but I'd just like to say how excited we are to be proposing this project with you tonight. We are proposing a new four-story, 160-room hotel that will be comprised of two market-leading brands, Fairfield Inn and Suites and Town Play Suites, and will add conservatively over 300, or 30,000 new room nights to the Beaver Creek Hotel market. We're very excited about where the hotel will be located, at the mall at Fairfield Commons. It's about, it'll be on about two acres of land. That will be across from the Red Robin, if you know where that is. And we worked hard to provide a building that provides a lot of screening between the entrance and coming up to the hotel, and provides a lot of clean lines, but also works with the architecture of the community, which is having a strong amount of masonry in the design, a strong masonry base, and a strong cornice at the top of the building. We didn't want this to be plain-looking. We also reviewed the zoning resolution, and I'd like to point out just a couple corrections to it, if I may. We are proposing 160 rooms. Between the zoning meeting and tonight's meeting, we had requested that we add four more rooms. We discovered we had enough space on the site to where we could fit that in, and so we would like to request that addition. And we also discovered the need to add a couple of feet of height to the project to accommodate mechanical systems for the hotel, so we modified our elevations. And one other thing, that adding the four more spaces, this would add 63 spaces at the top parking lot and not the 58 on item 19 that's in the report. So apart from those items, we have no problems with the resolution. So with that, we hope that you'll vote for approval. And if you have any questions, with me tonight are, aside from myself, are Mr. A.J. Patel, the project owner, our civil engineer, Laura Helbling, and Leanne Rukowsky, the general manager with the mall. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The case you have before you is PUD 88-21. It's the Marriott Dual Brand Hotel. It's the major modification, 19-6. Again, the applicant's looking to build a four-story, 160-room hotel on a little over two acres. As he stated, they're proposing to build this hotel at the mall at Fairfield Commons, and specifically, this is the former Sears, so you're going to have Round 1 down on the first floor, and then the room place up on the second floor utilizing this parking lot. And so what they're looking to do is build the hotel on the two-acre area out in front or just south of the, this is where the former Sears Auto Center is, is now, now it's a car rental place. So they're looking to put the hotel in this general area here.
Will there be questions later?
Again, the mall was rezoned in 2000, or I'm sorry, in 1988, and it included all underlying B3 uses. It's a PUD, but it includes all uses that are allowed in a B3, and hotels are allowed in a B3. So what they're looking to do this evening is inappropriate and allowed use within the PUD. And they've got restaurants on the south side of them. Obviously, the mall is just to the north, and then there's retail to the southeast and then the movie theaters to the southwest. So, you know, it's in a, it's in a highly visible, highly, you know, popular area with the, with the amount of users that they're looking to have. I think that it's a very good location for this. Seen here is the proposed site plan. Again, the hotel is going to be stretched along the road. The road's down here to the south, so it kind of parallels the road. They're looking at three access points to the site, one being at this location, which is about the same location as you get to the Sears Auto Center now, so it's that on Ring Road. They are looking to cut into the hill and actually have a secondary access to, so right now, you can't get, you can't go between these two parking lots without going on the Ring Road, and they're looking to have an access road at this area so that you can go from the lower level to the upper level without having to utilize the Ring Road. And then finally, a third access point will be back here where you're, if you're at Round 1 or Dick's Sporting Goods up just north of that, you know, there's that back entrance to the hotel that way. So they are looking to have three access points to the site. Now, with this application, it represents a loss of 164 parking spaces to the mall overall, but the number is still, they're still well adequately parked for the mall. Even with that loss, there'll be over 4,900 spot parking spaces in the mall, so, you know, we're not concerned with the loss of parking spaces. And this site, they did, you know, designate the appropriate amount of parking, 105 down below and 63 above on the, they're looking to get 63 in the upper-level parking lot as a parking easement, shared parking agreement, which we require them to have that agreement in place before we issue a permit for the site. Seen here is the architectural elevations of the four-story hotel. It's mostly white and gray ephesus. They do show a gray stone around the entire base of the building. Actually, it's the first floor of the building, so that does give those multiple layers, and is a good, it's a good way for, when you're looking at the building, so you're not, you're looking at wall massings or anything else out of your eyes. You can go to a lot of different places with the building and a lot of interesting different features. So there is that stone base. They do have the same type of cornice that we had them put over at the Soin Medical Center, the Soin Hospital, and then also at the hotels, other hotels that are in the area as well. This is kind of flat, but, you know, distinctive cornice feature. You can see that they're proposing this ephesus brick on the sides of the building and on some of the panels of the building. And again, this is the gray and brownish stone that they're proposing in other areas of the building. This is a 3D rendering of the building. It's an attractive building. You know, we were pleased to see what they're proposing and, you know, think that this will work well with the area. Seen here is the proposed landscape plan, and again, as you can see, they do show a significant investment in landscaping throughout the site, and I think that's, that's important, you know, to, to help, you know, soften the site in terms of, you know, with a parking lot that's over, almost 5,000 parking spaces, all the landscaping you can get out there is really helpful to help break up that pavement. And what they're proposing here is a good investment in landscaping. They propose to have lighting, exterior lighting, and the perimeter of the parking lots will make sure that when they do come in with the final fixtures, they're full, they're full cutoff fixtures that meet our code and, you know, don't increase any light over, light spill. They're proposing signage on all four elevations, but considering the, I mean, these signs will be over 40 feet off the, off the ground level and the sheer size of the building, we're not concerned with what they're proposing in terms of wall signage. One thing, they are proposing a small ground sign out on the, at the main entrance, and as city council can recall, you know, many of our ground signs in the most recent past have that stone feature on, or whatever masonry material we have them use, not just on the base, but wrapping the sides of the, the face of the sign, so it gives it more of a masonry wrap rather than just a, just a base and a sign face. So we added the condition that they have that stone wrap. Planning commission recommends approval. As the applicant stated, there's a few, he was going through the resolution, and when he talked about the 63 rooms, that was because they added four rooms since, they're proposing to add four rooms since it was gone to planning commission. The motion does reflect that. If you look at the motion, that condition number 19 in the motion does say 63, not 58. So we did add that and update that in the motion. So again, planning commission and staff do recommend approval of the applicant's requests, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following any public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this application? Seeing none, we will move on, and we'll go to council time, and Councilman Carron, you got a?
I have a question. Isn't there a continuous right-hand turn? You go out or down, when you turn there by the jewelry store, isn't that a continuous turn?
Either, both directions.
And there's a stop sign on the other. How does that change now? Maybe I didn't understand it.
How will that change, Randy? Does anything change? I noticed you got a crosswalk.
The crosswalk would be way, way down on this corner. It's going to, it's so the patrons of the hotel can walk over to the restaurants. This is the continuous turn, if that's what you're asking about.
Yeah, oh, I see.
And so that's not going to change.
All right, I'm sorry.
You wouldn't want traffic backing out on the North Fairfield or any waiting.
It's on down, it's about...
It's, oh, that's a good, that's probably 300 feet. I bet you, I don't know.
Crosswalks by Red Robin?
Yeah, it's, it's to get over to the, there's a, there's a small sidewalk here that we had.
All right, okay, I follow you.
And so we want them to be able to get over safely.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman up.
Yes, one quick question, and I don't know if staff or the applicant are better to answer it. Any thoughts to having some type of breezeway or connection right into the mall there? Any thoughts of having some type of breezeway or connection right into the mall there?
Are you over?
On the other side.
Oh, oh, well, I'll let, that's, I'll let the applicant talk about that.
We didn't consider that. That wasn't part of our plan.
Just ask them.
Okay, thanks.
Simple enough answer. That's all for me.
All right. Councilmember Van.
So I'd like somebody to talk about the pedestrian access from the mall, from the new hotel to wherever, either to the restaurants or to the mall, or I want to, I want to see, I want you to show me on a, on a picture how those mall, how those hotel people are going to be safely walking to do whatever.
Yes, we provided.
Just emphasize those sidewalks for me.
You can see around the entire perimeter of our site, we have sidewalks. This is an important consideration, have site connectivity with, with the hotel and allow anyone staying at the hotel, or anyone coming from the hotel has a safe way to cross the road. There's a new crosswalk here, and this, this lines up right with the corner of the Red Robin here. And then there will be an additional crosswalk that will meet up with another sidewalk over here.
Does it go all the way to the movie theater?
It goes all the, it goes up the street to the hotels, the two hotels, and goes, it goes past the Fox and Hound.
Okay.
And goes up to the hotel. And I brought the Spring Hill Suites through before you. We actually provided a sidewalk at that, from that hotel over to the movie theater. So trying to knit together the entire area is important to us.
Okay. Are you doing anything on the rooftop? You know, like a nice bar or anything?
We are not doing anything with the rooftop in this case, but our roof.
A garden?
We are not.
Yeah.
No. But we will, but the parapets of the hotel will hide our mechanical equipment, so the community won't have to look at that.
But it would be a nice thing to think about. Are you going to have a restaurant?
We will not have a restaurant.
So it's only sleeping rooms?
Yes, that is correct.
I appreciate the landscaping. And the other question was about meeting rooms. Will people come to this hotel and have meetings?
Not per se. This is not a conference facility, but it will have a couple of small meeting rooms for guests inside. About basically the equivalent of two hotel rooms worth of space, so very small.
Very small.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's the kind of thing that you've got at Fairfield in already. And some of the other hotels have those small spaces, but.
This would be equivalent.
Yeah, it would be nice sometime if we had somebody that had a little bit bigger spaces. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the applicant. You know, it's a, as you go around the community, you see a lot of hotels coming up, and you think, you know, can we support another one? But, you know, it just shows that as past council members and current council members, you know, we're becoming a destination, and it's a testament, you know, that we're continuing to add, you know, more amenities to that. I do want to also appreciate the connectivity and the design with trying to connect some of the outer lots into what's already existing to make this more of a place where you can, you know, stop and go from place to place as it continues to grow. And kudos to the mall for continuously thinking about creative new ways to fill their space and continue to be a great partner for this community. That's all I have.
Councilmember Littler.
Well, well said, Councilmember Rushing. I too thank you for coming and investing in our community. It's incredibly, just wonderful to know that we still have, you know, we are viable, and we have the mall at Fairfield Commons is our destination. So having you come was great. Four stories, I think those will be able to be filled. Will you have a bar inside for cocktails or anything like that? I know you know a restaurant, but.
No.
No, okay.
No bar.
No, that's fine. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I think it's a great opportunity to utilize the space, and, you know, we have plenty of parking at that area, so I think the more people that we can have come, I also think it'll help with the Fox and Hound and Red Robin and those restaurants on that side of the mall. And the connectivity is very important, so I think it's well, wonderful. Thank you for investing in our community again.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Are you going to be bicycle friendly? We are on, our rails-to-trails thing that goes from, from east to west coast is, there are going to be more and more bikers that have bicycles with them that need a place to stay. And I, and I know from going to conferences about bicycles that some hotels are just rolling out the carpet to figure out where they're going to keep those bikes.
Sure.
And those kind of things. So it's something else to plan ahead for.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we've tried a couple hotels. It just depends. It really depends, and it's something that, hey, look, if you can get on connectivity-wise, it's great. I mean, we'll do it. If it's going to bring you to my hotel, we'll put it in. I mean, it's, you know, that's, we're here to be in business. So, I mean, but right now, we haven't seen that. We, and we own quite a few hotels. We see trends of what's picking up, what's not picking up. But is that something, if my consumer's asking for it, we'll put it in. You know, but at this point, we haven't seen that level yet, so, you know, it's definitely something we consider. But, you know, again, it's, 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 it's got all suites as a top-tier Marriott flag. I mean, I've been looking for a long time to put a hotel over here, to get something on this side of the interstate. So this just worked out, and I think you guys are going to love it. I know.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. I think all my questions have been answered, all my comments have already been said, but I would just again thank the applicant for bringing this to the area. The renderings look beautiful, there's a demand for it in the area, and I think you're putting it in a perfect location, so thank you again.
My first impression when I saw this, or the application, was all the other hotels are on the outside of the Ring Road. And so it really concerned me a little bit about the, taking away the view and the, just the vision, that as you go around the Ring Road, you have the restaurant, you have more restaurants and hotels, all the hotels are on the outside. But I have come to realize that the mall is, is a changing being, so to speak, and you have to change with the times. I think this is a very large building that's going to hide a lot of the mall, but it's in the right place if it's going to do that at all. This is the place for it to happen. So I'm, I'm more acceptable to the fact that it's going to be on that side of the Ring Road. I think it's a beautiful building, so thanks for going the extra step, extra mile to make it that way. Thanks to staff for making sure that got done. And before we move forward, there was a couple other things. There was a height adjustment in the conditions that, does that need to be amended?
Well, in the motion, I've updated the date of the plan, so the August 7 plans do show that.
So it's already in the August 7?
Correct.
And what about 63 on number 19?
That's also reflected in the motion.
That's already taken care of, so we need no amendment to accommodate the applicants.
I think we're good on the motions.
All right. Anything else? Any general comment from anybody? Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for PUD 88-21.
We've got to read that.
For the purpose of taking administrative action, I approve of the PUD modification for the mall at Fairfield Commons on the basis that city council finds facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials, modification and amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for the PUD major modification approval as per 158.070 of the Beaver Creek zoning code.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
May I?
Seeing none, all in favor signal I by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Look forward to it. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 19-15.
This is a third reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning approximately 1.203 acres of land from our PUD residential plan unit development to our-1A one-family residential district, further described as book six, page six, parcel 226 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Upton. Is there any discussion? Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I have moved for approval of ordinance 19-15.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-15. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinance 19-16.
This is a first reading of an ordinance to establish a new special revenue fund and fiduciary fund in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles.
Ms. Adaway.
Good evening. So we are requesting two new funds to be established in conformity with the generally accepted accounting principles. As follows, on July 17, FEMA declared that the city is eligible for reimbursement from the storms. The auditor state recommends that all work completed and paid for, and then subsequently reimbursed by FEMA be run through a special revenue FEMA fund. In order to properly record all revenue and expenditures related to the tornado, it's necessary for the city to establish the Federal Emergency Management Fund. And then secondly, with passage of resolution 19-28, which created a city energy special improvement district, the city now needs to establish a new fiduciary fund in order to account for all the transactions that will result from the activity of the improvement district. So in order to be in compliance with state and federal reporting mandate, staff recommends adoption of ordinance 19-16 to establish these two new funds.
Thank you. Any discussion? Anybody got any comments, questions? All right. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone present tonight that has any input that they would like to get? Seeing none, is anybody from council have any input? All right. Do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of ordinance 19-16 and move it to a second and third reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 19-16 on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, thank you.
She's not going anywhere.
She's not going anywhere. You've got a few more to do. All right, true. Next, ordinance 19-17.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019, and to amend ordinances 18-28, 19-1, 19-3, and 19-12.
You're up again.
So this ordinance contains four different appropriations that are being presented for your approval. The first one, the first two actually are concern the street levy fund. As part of our competitive bidding process for salt purchases made in 2018 and 19, the city was required to purchase a minimum of 8,000 tons of salt. As of today, the remaining amount that we are obligated to purchase from Compass Minerals is over, a little over 1,400 tons. The city's salt barn is currently full with no capacity to store an additional 1,400 tons of salt. The city does have the options to store, to store the salt with the vendor, however they would charge us a storage fee. As an alternative, the city reached out to Beaver Creek Township and Green County to see if either had room to store the salt or purchase it for their use. As it turns out, Green County is interested and has the capacity to purchase the salt from us. And in addition to that, the prices they were quoted for this year are actually $10 less per ton than what we will be able to provide it to them for $10 less per ton than what their current quote is. So since we will be invoicing the county for the salt, we need to certify additional revenue for $126, $345, which will cover the amount invoiced by Compass Minerals. The second item for the street levy fund has to do with the next phase of building improvements at the municipal maintenance facility. The city contracted with Smart Plug to upgrade the HVAC controls. This project was originally budgeted for $30,000. However, the actual cost of the upgrade is now estimated to be $69,550. Of this amount, the city will receive a grant directly from Smart Plug for 35, excuse me, $34,775, which is 50% of the total cost of the upgrade. In order to meet grant reporting requirements, the city needs to appropriate the amount of the grant and then certify additional revenue in the same amount for the $34,775. The third appropriation being presented is for the park levy fund, and several of our parks sustained damage due to the tornadoes and required debris cleanup and removal. Tree Care, the vendor we used for this cleanup, has billed the city $46,000 for the work that's been performed. Since this was not a budgeted expense, the city needs to appropriate an additional $46,000 in order to pay for the cleanup. Once this invoice is paid, it'll be submitted as part of the FEMA Public Assistance Grant, which we anticipate to receive 75% reimbursement from the federal grant, and then up to 12.5% from the state. Fortunately, property taxes received to date are greater than what was budgeted for 2019. Therefore, the additional property tax revenue collected will need certified to cover the costs associated with the tornado event amounting to $46,680. And then the final appropriation is for the golf course. The golf course has been experiencing a specially good year for special orders, and special orders are those that the customers place after they've had golf fittings or special items that they ask the golf course to order on their behalf directly from the vendor. So this year, the golf course has already exceeded their budget for special orders and are anticipating more sales through the remainder of the year. Therefore, the golf course needs to appropriate an additional $10,000 for current and anticipated special orders and to certify the corresponding special order revenue as well. So in conclusion, staff recommends adoption of ordinance 19-17. If you have any questions about any of that, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'm glad you're there to take care of us. The, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, is there any comments from council? Just help yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I did have just one question around the park levy fund. Since we've got to put this money up front, or foot it up front, I know a lot, a lot of it could be reimbursed at different points. Is that going to impact us going below the threshold that we had set out? Because I know we've, we've allowed, I think, the streets and other funds to go below what we've done, but I don't remember parks being part of that.
It will a little bit. But the additional revenue that came in on the property taxes, it'll, right now, it'll offset. It'll be a wash.
We're watching it. It's going to be close. Okay. All right, we just keep watching. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Thank you.
On the park levy, is, are all the trees, has all the tree work been done?
Yes, I'm going to go yes.
That was a shaking head yes, that was really hard to hear from up here, but I, I observed it.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have moved for approval of ordinance 19-17.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-17. This requires a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Littler?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, resolution 19-45.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to work with the Beaver Creek Township trustees and Beaver Creek Trails Incorporated, AKA Beaver Creek Trails, to take any and all action necessary to transfer land to the city of Beaver Creek, which includes but not, may not be limited to parcels numbers B4200600250010600
Thank you. All right.
Good evening.
Please, Karen.
Sorry, I had to laugh at all those numbers. So this resolution is just asking that the city manager can move forward to get the de-transfers for Rotary Park. That's everything at the front of the park. So one of the things we had in the Rotary Park con-
of the park. So one of the things we had in the Rotary Park contract going into this year was should our park levy be successful, that in January first, two thousand twenty, the township would deed the, all those parcels over to us. So that's in the front of the park, the roadway going in, the soccer fields. There's a tree line that was deeded to Beaver Creek Trails. And so it's just everything right before the bridge. So it's just requesting that we move forward and get those de-transfers all lined up. And so that way, the front of Rotary Park would be owned by the city.
So what is the status of the softball diamonds?
The salt, that land is still owned by the county. And so what we will be doing is we are working with the county to go into an agreement so that we operate and maintain the back of the park. So we could still do softball.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of ordinance nineteen dash forty-five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash forty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution nineteen dash forty-seven.
This is a resolution giving consent to the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation to proceed with the Bridge Inspection Program Services Project, PID number one zero nine-three-three-four.
Good evening.
Giving mayor, members of city council. The city currently owns and maintains twenty-four bridges within the city. The Ohio Department of Transportation is a program where they'll provide free inspections for those bridges that carry traffic. Of those twenty-four bridges, eighteen of those would qualify under this program. We've been in this program for the past three years, and they provide very detailed inspections, and they've been very good at communicating any issues to us. And it's staff's recommendation that we continue under this program. In order to proceed with this, we would need the passage of this resolution. We'll, of course, forward that on to ODOT afterwards. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any?
Just a thank you for working with the Department of Transportation for the inspections because that is very time consuming and costly.
It's a win-win situation.
It is a win-win. So thank you to you and your staff for staying abreast of all of these opportunities.
Thank you.
What happens to the other six bridges?
Uh, we will have to inspect those ourselves. Those are primarily along the Creekside Trail is where a lot of those bridges are located. And we'll typically contract that out and get those done.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Motion for resolution nineteen dash forty-seven.
Second.
I have a motion to approve resolution nineteen dash forty-seven. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, resolution nineteen dash forty-eight.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and file with the District eleven Public Works Integrating Committee and application on behalf of the city of Beaver Creek for aid in partly financing the costs of capital improvement projects pursuant to the programs administered by the Ohio Public Works Commission as amended, to execute contract agreements with the state of Ohio, authorizing the city manager to inform all acts and execute all documents they consider necessary to fill this, fulfill the city of Beaver Creek's obligations under said grant applications and corresponding agreements, and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements, and to provide assurances and additional information as required by the Ohio Public Works Commission.
Thank you.
Yes, even again. At the July eighth meeting, city council approved a resolution to submit a funding application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the County Line Road Project. After that approval and before submitting the application, we had some additional discussions with OPWC staff. This project is kind of unusual because it not only splits between the cities of Beaver Creek and Kettering, it also straddles the county line and additionally straddles different OPWC funding districts. Because the project is within two different OPWC funding districts, they expressed a lot of concern about the administration of the project because they have pretty strict rules about, you know, money allocated for District eleven, which is where Beaver Creek is. They don't want that money going to District four, which is where Kettering is. So because of those difficulties and to avoid a lot of potential issues down the road, we elected to go ahead and change applications. And what we submitted was for a resurfacing project on Research Boulevard. And this project, it goes from the county line, county road, county line, all the way over to the exit ramp to US thirty-five. So it's basically the entire section of Research Boulevard. The project is a two million dollar project. We've already secured roughly a million dollars in ODOT funds towards that work, and the application submitted requests an additional five hundred thousand dollars in OPWC funding. As I said, the application, in order to not miss the deadline, was submitted on July twenty-sixth. But in order to finalize the application, we need the passage of this resolution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is this a larger scope than it was when we were a joint venture?
It's roughly, roughly the same dollar amount we're asking for in OPWC money. It's, I think it was about five hundred thousand on County Line Road also. So about the same.
But we would have also had to split whatever money we would receive with Kettering. So we're, we are really making a better deal, so to speak, on this.
Anyone else have any comment? Do I have a motion?
I would move for resolution, approval of resolution nineteen dash forty-eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash forty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next, resolution nineteen dash forty-nine.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into mutual aid agreements with all cities, villages, and/or townships willing to enter into mutual aid agreements with the city of Beaver Creek, and further authorizing the city manager to work with Beaver Creek Law Director to renegotiate and/or modify mutual aid agreements entered by, entered into by the city of Beaver Creek as needed to meet all federal emergency management agencies, FEMA, or other state agency requirements.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. As you well know, we received support from thirty-four different jurisdictions to come and help us during the tornado cleanup. At our first meeting with FEMA, we became aware that we were able to enter into post mutual aid agreements with those communities to afford them the opportunity, should they so desire, to receive a reimbursement from FEMA for those hours they spent, both equipment-wise and manpower-wise. Many of those communities have insisted that it was a donation, but we wanted to afford all those communities the opportunity to submit for reimbursement, should they so choose, once we became aware of it. Incidentally, if it is selected as a donation, we are able to use those funds as part of our matching funds for what FEMA would call a grant or our total reimbursement package. It, it only seemed fair and equitable once we became aware that that was an opportunity for those communities to receive reimbursement, to make sure that they were aware of that, and provide them the option of those two choices. We are under a deadline. Those communities do have to notify us only thirty days after we became aware of it. So we've provided notice to them, and I think the city manager shared that with you. This evening, we're looking for authorization, that broad authorization, to authorize the city manager to enter into those agreements with those communities who decide to enter into the agreement with us. Be happy to answer any questions that you have this evening.
Have you had any contact? Do we know of any contact?
Oh, we've, we've heard back from several different communities thus far. All have indicated a donation was their original intention. We've heard from one that has indicated that they would like to enter into a mutual aid agreement. So.
Anyone else?
I would just like to thank our staff again for finding this. I know we had a ton of help after the tornado, and our community is certainly grateful for all of those who did assist us. And I think this is just a good faith effort to show that, you know, how grateful we are for their assistance. So thank you for bringing this to us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. I missed this FEMA reimbursement. You got to cross every T and dot every I, don't you?
That is for sure. We said we've survived the first part of the hurricane. Now we're in the paper hurricane of sorting through all the documents. Well, we will get through. Our staff did a great job, and we're certainly appreciative of all those communities that came and helped. And we've certainly extended that if any of those communities have a challenge in the future, we'll certainly be there to help them as well.
By all means. Absolutely.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Approve nineteen forty-nine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash forty-nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next, liquor permit. A is, you going to do them all at once or just one at a time? One at a time, I guess. All right. Chief?
Good evening, mayor, council. I have three liquor requests. The first one is a transfer of a liquor permit for LaFino's Inc. Doing business with Beaver Valley Wine and Spirits. Liquor Control sent us notification that there was a request to transfer the D-two, D-two X, and D-six liquor permits from LaFino's Inc. to, to M-two S. Doing businesses Beaver Valley Wine and Spirits, thirty-two, twenty-five CJ Drive. All the required records checks were conducted on the business office shareholders for this request. Staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, motion to accept the liquor permit LLC Beaver Valley Wine and Spirits transfer without comment. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second request is for a new liquor permit. Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent us notification reference a new D-two, D-three, D-six liquor permit for LaPerla Nails and Spa LLC, twenty-eight-twenty Center Drive, Suite A. The required checks on the business officer shareholders for this request was also conducted. And again, staff is recommending this request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept without comma for LaPerla Nails and Spa LLC.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you.
And the last request, it's a new liquor permit request, I believe, for a business that's opening tomorrow. Division of Liquor Control sent us notification reference a D-five A, D-six liquor permit for Maney at Beaver Creek LLC. Doing businesses True by Hilton, thirty-eight thirteen Colonel Glen Highway. Records checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the business officer shareholders for this request, and staff is recommending this request also move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to have a motion to accept without comment on the True by Hilton.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next, decision items, acceptance of second quarter two thousand nineteen financial summary. Mr. Casera.
Good evening. I'm sure you've all read my detailed report. I just want to give you a couple of highlights, though. Golf course, doing great out there, lack of rain, which, you know, isn't very helpful for the golf course, but it helps the people come out more. And they've done that, we've done through June, about ten thousand rounds of golf, and that's about twelve hundred more than we did last year. So again, you can see that equate into revenue. Food and beverage is also way ahead of last year. At this time, they're about, up about fifteen percent or thirty-two thousand dollars. So it's good to see that the golf course and the weather is holding up for them out there. But it was interesting just to note that although we are getting a lot of hotels in and everything like that, the revenue is pretty much stayed stagnant from last year. So even though we keep adding them, it's the deck chair concept that the more hotel rooms, you know, more folks coming in there, but they're competitively pricing the group in that vicinity. So I just want to let you know. Also, there was a good question about the fund balance, the park fund. We're analyzing those right now. What we found out is, is that we have a couple of properties that were damaged, citywide damages, and one was Tobias Zimmer Barn. And we're just right now starting to get that cleared out. But that was insured with us for about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So what we have to do is we're going to end up running those through the books too. So you'll see in the next meeting, there'll be some additional appropriation, but the offset will be the insurance proceeds from that. We do have twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. Not only did we have the tornado damage, not hurricane damage, but we also had a lightning strike out at the golf course where the lightning actually hit the golf course and hit the ground, and it spread out to some of our, the satellite boxes that control our watering system. So again, we'll be filing a claim on that to also get that. Also with the golf course, right after the tornado, there was a day or two out there where they were trying to clear up all the roadways and the fairways and things like that. And there's going to be some business continuation coverage on that too. So we'll be applying to get that reimbursed for you. But again, you'll be seeing a lot of these additional appropriations come through as we get to the second round of the phases of the FEMA cleanup and all these insurance claims that are being before you, probably next meeting. So other than that, again, we've got all of our property taxes in. And I'm happy to say, based on the fact that our county auditor projects very conservatively, and we've got about five percent more than what he had projected, which is nice at this time when we're having a cash flow issue with these tornado expenses. So but be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, this report doesn't reflect all of the expenditures that happen directly right after the end of that month. So but you'll be seeing those in the next quarter report.
Very good. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a couple of comments.
Please.
Mr. Casera, could you talk a little bit more about that park fund two seventy-nine? Looking at your summary, you know, you stated that we're receiving less this year. What was it, fourteen thousand less this year? But previously, Teresa had mentioned that we were getting more of them.
Yeah, in that report, it should have said that at that point, we only had the first half settlement.
Okay, so this is through end of June.
Right after I wrote that, we ended up getting the advances in the second half. So again, it turned out to be, we're in a little bit of a deficit. And then with the delinquents and everything that came in. And ironically enough, that was about forty-six thousand dollars, exactly what they needed to clean up the park. So that's where we were able to just certify that revenue and swap out. So again, the fund balance should be near that twenty percent mark that we've established.
Got it.
Because they were right at that when we did the budget. So again, it doesn't, it's not going to affect that or read into the fund balance at this point yet. So.
And then I just wanted for general comment, the county auditor arbitrarily raised their rates a hundred and five percent, which just eats away at the funds that we, we were getting. He said that we're coming in higher than what was estimated. Well, county auditor arbitrarily is just taking a little bit more of that away from us. So just wanted to put that one out there, Mr. Auditor.
And if you talked to him, it wasn't arbitrary. They hadn't been charging us a part of that fee for a long time. Because again, they had a fund balance. And eventually, by doing that, they whittled away at their fund balance. And now it was time to, you know, re-implement that fee in order to get that fund balance to a reasonable amount. So again, yeah, we were as shocked as you were. Because we all looked at it, and it said point four-eight. And we were like, well, point four-eight is half a percent. That's not bad. But it was on top of the point four-eight that they were already charging. And so you're right, it almost doubled.
Arbitrary only, and there was no notice?
Well, they did send us a letter, but you know.
Yeah, after it was decided.
They actually sent it, you know, right when we were working on the budget, something we're trying to do the right thing, and let us know about that. But we didn't catch it in time. We didn't put it in ours.
You defend him better than I do.
Yeah.
He does, he does a great job.
Well, you know, he sends me a lot of money, you know. He sends me a lot of advances before the draw, so I'm happy with him. So but yeah, good point.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion, acceptance of second quarter two thousand nineteen financial.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the second quarter two thousand nineteen financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. We'll move on to council time. And councilmember Littoral, would you like to start?
I would. I just would like to thank the Beaver Creek Popcorn Festival Committee, excuse me, for coming tonight. It was great to see them. And that is a great opportunity for everyone to come out for the popcorn festival. And it again is a destination. So we have a lot of people from the surrounding area. So and also want to say a special thanks to the COPPs because they will be out in force, and they always do a great job with directing the traffic that comes into the city. And along with the COPPs, I'm going to take a minute to talk about the Citizens Police Academy. gonna take a minute to talk about the Citizens Police Academy that's coming up. Please join the Beaver Creek Police Department and speakers for their CPA class, which is the Citizens Police Academy number 17. So it starts September 18th through November 6th, and it's 6:30 to 9:30 on Wednesday evenings, and you can be a Beaver Creek city resident or a township resident, business owners, you just have to be 18 years or older. You can, please contact the academy commander, which is going to be Community Engagement Officer Mark Brown at 426-1225, or visit the webpage beavercreechoyo.gov, 204 Citizen Police Academy, and you can find that on our website. And class size is limited. There is a registration deadline, which is August 23rd, and I think this gives the community a wonderful opportunity to work side by side with law enforcement and see what a wonderful police department that we truly have in this community. And it really gives the, the people that do this police academy an understanding of how law enforcement works and why and how, and the reasons that law enforcement has, does the things that they do, and the training that they have, and it just highlights, you know, how grateful we are to have those folks in our community taking care of us and keeping our streets and our community safe. And thank you to the chief and his staff for doing such a great job.
Thank you, and they are great ambassadors.
Yes, they are. They spread the word to others and encourage other, their friends end up signing up. It's just a wonderful opportunity.
Absolutely. Councilmember Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Beaver Creek City Schools. They hosted their opening day ceremony this morning, drawing by Mayor Stone, Councilmember Curran, the city manager. So that means students will be going back to school, I believe their first day is Wednesday. So the roads in the morning and when school's lighting out will be much busier. So those out in the community, please be aware of that as we go back for another school season. Also, want to thank our police department and fire department and Heartland Beaver Creek for hosting another successful national night out. Although it got pretty wet for a brief moment in the second half, it was an enjoyable evening, and I'm sure the officers in the dunk tank got even more wet than we did standing outside. Saw Officer Brown that dunked many times by a long line of folks waiting to do that. Kudos to our Parks, Rec, and Culture Department for hosting a movie in the park. This time, the weather was perfect, and it held through, so we had opportunity to host another movie in the park. And the last thing, guys, want to thank the golf course, as well as the Sandtrap Foundation, and our celebrity bartenders, Mayor Stone and Representative Peralas, for hosting a benefit at the golf club for the tornado fund that is going through the Dayton Foundation. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
No report.
Nothing?
Uh-uh.
All right. Councilmember Upton?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I won't give away too much, but successfully had the NVRPC meeting a couple weeks ago. I think everyone should have got the executive update from, from Brian, but without giving it away, next week at our, our joint meeting with township, Trustee Wallace and I have a little going green initiative we'd like to discuss with everybody. So be on the lookout for that.
On the lookout.
Yep.
All right. Councilmember Curran?
Yeah, I was very impressed by the Beaver's Creek Back Schools event this morning. Just wanted to congratulate the superintendent, staff, teachers. It was just a really outstanding event. I was very glad to be present to witness the big kickoff, as it was. Also, to invite the council Saturday, the 17th. Our church, Patterson Park Church, has a, they have a bouncer, a bouncer.
(laughing).
They have a bounce pass, hot dogs, all that stuff, and you gotta come out and hear the jubilation band. They're really good. They play 1940s music. It's really fantastic. It's on a Saturday evening. It's from 3:00 to 7:00. So I'd invite everybody to come out. I realize we'll have a long day that day, but if you have a few minutes, why pop out?
Thank you, George. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I just want to wish everybody good luck going back to school this week. I know everyone's prepared. I know Ankeny had a brand-new painting in their opening walkway, so they're all ready to go for the middle schoolers this week. And also, again, thank you to our law enforcement and fire department for putting on the national night out. I thought it was great that they were giving out free donuts every time you dunked Officer Wyska Baroska Brown, and as much as I wanted that donut, that line was just way too long for me. So that's how popular that event was. So thanks again for hosting that. I know we had the Montgomery County sheriffs out as well, and a couple other departments that were participating in the event, and I think it was just a great community event for everybody.
All right. You didn't just walk around and go boing on the.
You know, I thought about it, and I thought about blaming my son because I was holding him. You can't deny a seven-month-old when he wants a donut.
That's right.
I think that's a little, that was a little too much for me. I mean, need those officers in the future, and didn't want to push my luck on that one.
Next time, if you need moral support, let me know.
I absolutely will.
All right. Several things on my list have been discussed. Sandtrap at the golf course, that was a good event. And, and then the following day, they had a Shaw School, a lot of the proceeds from that fundraiser bought all the school supplies. It was like going to a store. There were so many supplies inside. But not just school supplies, they had clothes, they had household goods. They even had some beauticians in there giving haircuts. So they, that, the, the tornado effort is still alive and well, and going strong and doing a fantastic job. National night out, I guess somebody already mentioned was certainly was a nice event, and, and thank Heartland for hosting. Pete and I attended the DDC mid-year update on Friday, and as always, it's an interesting update. It doesn't take very long, but it is right there in that time of day when you'd just as soon be doing something else on a Friday. But Eager Beavers, following that event on Friday, had their rally. Eager Beaver Football and Cheer. And this year, as you may recall, in the past, there was a split off, so there were two groups. They are unified this year, which is great. They have 209 youth involved this year. So it is really amazing. I put some pictures on Facebook of how many there were out there, and so it was nice to be able to be part of that kickoff. And just a little bit of trivia, it was 50 years ago last week that I landed in Vietnam.
Wow.
So it's a long time. It just seems like, doesn't seem like yesterday some days, but 50 years. So when we get to the 50 years, when I step back on U.S. soil, I'll let you know. All right. That's all I have, and turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a lot of those, the movie in the park, the golf fundraiser. Those were absolutely great, well-attended. The national night out, I will say, chief asked me if I wanted to be in the dunking booth, but luckily, I had a meeting I had to make it to.
I would have shut up and had.
I know. I would have had you guys all standing in line for that one. Luckily, I had a meeting. And the school today, that was, congratulations to the two Employee of the Years that were presented to today. And I tell you, if it doesn't make you want to go to a football game, the band, wow, they sounded great. Wow. It is a combination of a Pink Floyd, now get this, Pink Floyd and the Wizard of Oz is the show this year. So they played some of the music from it, and it sounded phenomenal already. So I'm sure as the year goes, and they perfect their show, it's gonna get even better sounding. So terrific job today by the school district, and thanks for the band for some great entertainment. I just wanted to update everybody on a tree debris cleanup. Put this down as a checkmark, check, one of our things off the list. Tree Care Incorporated completed the final pickup on Friday. Tree Care, along with city staff, drove the completed street, every street within the affected area, and tracked and documented the progress. In other words, pictures were taken, documentation was done. We just wanted to make sure that this was, nobody got left off the list, nobody has a 10-feet pile all of a sudden on the side of road that we didn't pick up. We, we just wanted to make sure, and that, you know, we're paying Tree Care, you know, it's a good funding source there, that they get paid, and we want to make sure that they did it appropriately, and our staff as well picked up some smaller stuff. So thanks to Tree Care, Bunyan, and the city staff for all the work that they've done. It's been a long road to recovery on that, and I know that's just the tree stuff. But I know, I will say that many, 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 many residents comments, thanks so much to the city for the removal of the tree debris. It just, you know, when you see it at the two different sites, you realize how much was in the road and in people's yards and backyards, and that alone really did help out the residents. So I know, I hear it. I hope you guys hear the same thing. Just say, want to cover the 2019 resurfacing program, the construction update. So concrete work, including the curb ramp upgrades and curb replacement began late July on the north end of town. So just, you'll see a theme here. We start north and then go south. So curbing ramp work will continue throughout the city, progressing from the north to south through September, weather permitting. And asphalt resurfacing work is currently scheduled to begin, weather permitting, in late August. So resurfacing work for the program will continue through October. Currently, resurfacing work is scheduled to begin on the north end of town and progress south. As always, if you have a question regarding resurfacing, it's our City of Beaver Creek Engineering Department at 427-5513. And this, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, which is going to be a big one. I have myself waited in line at this intersection or near this intersection several times during, you know, 5 o'clock rush hour. It is bad. So construction update for the Grange Hall and the National Road are called the Colonel Glenn Highway. So the week of August 19th, which is just next week, the contractor will begin working on improvements along Grange Hall, and Colonel Glenn will begin milling and repaving, paving operations. So the work will be performed during the evening hours in an effort to minimize the impact, and this work is anticipated to take most of the week to complete. When finished, all lanes at the intersection will be reopened to traffic. So hopefully, weather permitting, and I always have to say weather permitting, by the end of the month, this project will be completed. And can we, can we hear an amen or hallelujah or something? If anybody's driving, I will definitely say that.
Right.
And we've already, Citizens Police Academy, that is, I'll just stress, it is great. The best part of it, I know for council and for myself, is going on afterwards, after, at the graduation ceremony that they have, they, council are invited, and we get to be the ones asked the questions. And once they go through the academy, they're awful smart and ask some good questions. I remember last year, it was right out the gate. They knew they had questions for us. So good luck to them. If you haven't considered it, it's very, very worthwhile. So please sign up for it before all spots are taken. And other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. And if I could just quickly add, you talked about the affected area from the tornado. I drove through there, and the majority of the construction debris is gone, too. So the homeowners are taking care of that, and we have a lot of houses that have been leveled, and we have some new construction going on where they've leveled houses. So things are on the move in the, in the region.
Mayor, what about those apartments on Grange?
I never see anything going on over there. You drive up Grange Hall between Kemp and it looks like Dead City. There's nothing going on. Can anybody comment on that?
I, unless planning has any more information, I know that, other than being bubble-wrapped and, and looked at, yeah, I.
Amazing.
It's a big, it's a company, a big company, so it may take some time to.
I have seen them roofing some of the units. I cut through there quite often, so, I mean, there are workers out there.
There are workers out there?
I have seen them on some of the roofs of those apartments.
Thank you. Very good.
Just take some time. There's a lot of apartments right there.
Understand.
Lot of damage.
All right. At this point, it's citizen comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.